Okay, the recording is back. We're on live just once more reminding everybody this is a six-member board. Soon frankly to become a five-member board. So if a proponent wants to take advantage of the process of administrative deferral in order to wait for a full board, you have the right to do so. So let's return to the agenda, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to call the next two cases, calling DOA 135 9889, 400 Melnea Cass Boulevard. There is a companion case, DOA 135 9896, 402 Melnea Cass Boulevard. This is for 400, erecting new six-story multifamily structure with 60 dwelling units, four live, five work units, live-in work units, three commercial art stores. Violation Article 50, Section 24, four live-in work units, first floor is forbidden, Article 50, Section 29. FAR max has been a lot, it's been maxed. Article 50, Section 25, the building height maxed. Article 50, Section 40.1, street wall continuity. Article 50, Section 24, gallery use is conditional. Article 50, Section 40, 4.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 50, Section 40, 4.3, traffic visibility across the corner. This is for 402 Melnea Cass. This erects a six-story multifamily structure with 40 four dwelling units, three gallery, retail and live-in work unit. Violation Article 50, Section 24, use is conditional, gallery. Article 50, Section 24, retail is forbidden. Article 50, Section 24, one live-in working unit on the first floor is forbidden. Article 50, Section 25, the FAR has been maxed. Article 50, Section 25, the building height is maxed. Article 50, Section 40.1, street wall continuity. And Article 50, Section 40, 4.3, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary.
Chair Ehrlich, I would need to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Feaster, we have a five-member.
Well, I wanted to, I'll put my address on the record. I want to follow the rules, Mr. Chair. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Dane Torby, address 175 Federal Street, Boston. And in the last case before the break, I was wearing my hat as the chair of the Urban League. I am here representing the applicant here, and Stephen Chung is the architect on this particular matter. I am happy to have spoken both on the previous case and on this one here. These are projects which are going to be instrumental in what's going on in Roxbury. In fact, this project here is on Melnea Cass, very in the same vicinity as what's going on with Newby and Ascend, as well as the Benjamin Franklin and other properties in that area. But with that, I know that the secretary has written violations. I will, just for the sake of time, I will cease speaking and allow Stephen Chung, the architect, to walk the board and move the project. Mr. Chung?
Thank you, Joe. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a presentation. This is not what's being shown on the screen. It was just sort of a place. Can I go back to my slides?
I think.
Somebody's operating this. This isn't me, so can I share the slides that I have?
No, Madam Ambassador, these are the slides that we have and that we will go after, adapt to these slides.
Okay, let me. I don't even know what I'm looking at here. So this is a, hold on one second. Excuse me. Just give me one second because this is not. Okay, so the project is at 400 Melnea Cass Boulevard and 402 Melnea Cass Boulevard, which are looking at as the ground floor plan of the proposal, which consists of two buildings on one lot, which we call Parcel 8. The far left is a park, which we call Gateway Park. The project is a result of an RFP that was issued in February 2020. Urbana Cus submitted a proposal and due 2020, thus was designated in April 2021. To date, we have approvals from MIPA, BPDA, Article 80, as well as the Boston City Design Commission. So, okay, so the, okay, so we're looking at a typical office floor plan, and we have, on the right side is a, is an apartment building, and to the left is a condominium building. And on top of that is a podium, the podium, if you can sort of slide to the ground floor plan. Whoever's controlling the slides, other direction. And on the ground floor plan, to the far left, there is an art gallery, which adjoins the park, the public park, which we are also designing, developing. To the far, to the left of that is the lobby to the condominium building. And then there are a series of spaces which wrap around that first building, commercial art spaces as well as live-work art spaces. There's space between the two buildings, that is pedestrian walkway, which connects Melnea Cass and the sidewalk on Melnea Cass to something which we call Art Walk, which is a space, pedestrian space to the rear, which moves along the side of the building, the south part of the building that you see there, and then connects to Gateway Park, which to your far left. On the right side, we have the apartment building, which has a similar program on the ground floor, a series of live-work spaces as well as some commercial art spaces. On the far right are all the spaces dedicated for the residential building, lobby and bike room and so forth and so on. On the inside of the plan, there is some parking, just a small number of parking for the apartment residents. Okay, do you want to keep talking about this?
If I might come in, Mr. Chung, let me emphasize some of the points that I know that the board would like to know. First of all, this is 110,000 square foot mixed-use development. The two buildings, as we pointed out, 404 or 2 Melnea Cass. There are 109 affordable units, 64 rental, and 45 home ownership units, five of which are live-work units included in the total. And four will be rental and one will be ownership. We're really focusing here, trying to speak to the artists in the community, give folks live-work spaces through the community process and what's desirable. And this was one of the reasons why this applicant won the, was selected as the tentative developer for this project through the RFP process with BPDA. There's also 3,000 square feet of exhibition and cafe space and about eight, over 8,000 square feet of public parks. And we're trying to integrate all of this into the, into this neighborhood in conjunction with the other developments that exist. And I know Member Panato asked about our, on the previous developer with regards to their relationship to Benjamin Franklin. We also work very closely with Historic Boston, my client across the street in terms of Madison Park and what they're doing. So all of this area, Miss Panato was being developed, as you know well, being a former director of Madison Park, this is all the area that we're looking at, inclusive of Urbana Cus project diagonally across the street, which is the hotel and condominium. So Roxbury is on the move, and these are projects which will indefinitely enhance that. And that's what this project is filling in the space through the RFP process, which was supported. So I just wanted to put those high level because I know your, your time is whisking away there, Mr. Chairman, and I just wanted to do that unless you want Mr. Chung to go into business.
No, 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 I appreciate it. So let me ask some specific questions. How many parking spaces are for the total project, but for the combination of the two?
There are, I believe, 15 spaces, just for the rental building.
Right, and how many units?
Oh, sorry. Two.
Yeah.
We were searching spaces, sorry. We had some recent adjustments to the floor plan.
Okay. And with respect to trying to, this is the same question I asked the previous applicant. I mean, I know, because this has come before us on numerous occasions, getting artists to come in, what is the process of providing preference to ensure that that is just not a wish but actually a reality?
Yeah. This is Cameron Zahiri, I'm the developer for this project. We are working with City of Boston, the Art and Culture Department, and also MOH. So these units are going to be only for the artist that has a certificate with City of Boston. So we basically are going to just market it through MOH and with assistance of the Art and Culture, you know, Department of City of Boston. So we have been in discussion with them, and the idea of, the whole idea of this art on the first floor is really to activate the Melnea Cass and Harrison Avenue corner and also close to the park.
Okay, thank you. Because I do know that, I mean, I know that the previous applicant said that there are issues with legalities around fair markets, but I also know there are ways of really making sure, you know, through the certificate program that you mentioned, that there are ways of marketing in order to achieve those goals. So thank you for that.
And I might add also, Mr. Ehrlich, I didn't speak of the early applicant, but I agree with this as well. Under the Fair Housing Act, there are some exceptions to address certain specific aspects which would allow this. I represent here, and we certainly will pursue those, and I certainly will pass it on to the developer, the previous developer. But there are provisions within the Fair Housing Act which would give some exceptions.
Yeah, you're wearing a lot of hats today, Mr. Feaster.
I know, entirely, but you know, I learned that, I learned that from Miss Panato, so therefore, you know, and from you. So I've been doing my best.
All right, thanks. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Excuse me, the plans are good. You know, I was surprised there wasn't a bigger presentation with this, at least in my files either. So I did jump into the BPDA website when I was reviewing the cases, and I think there's a, there's a lot of merit to this proposal in terms of its urban moves. I think the park on the corner of Washington Street is quite nice and will provide, I think, some real relief and programming there as needed. One question I just had is, are you guys, the building behind that existing smaller building, is that part of this development on a whole, or is it just not part of this as a zoning relief gang?
The non-factory building?
Yes.
Are you referring to that one? That's a different, a different proponent's development.
I see.
And we're, but we're in coordination because we have a space which interfaces with his.
Yes.
It's near the end of our park, so we're coordinating. I think it's, same with BSA, we're sort of working with our neighbors to try to develop the best urban plan.
Got it.
Because I wish I could show you all these images I have.
Well, I have them up on my own screen, so I guess.
Okay.
For my viewing pleasure only, but.
Okay.
That was one of my questions. And then the connective path between the two buildings, is that intended to connect back into that? Is that part of that? I was trying to make sure I understood.
That through block is originated from a kind of an extension of Reed Street across Melnea Cass, a sort of way to, kind of a bigger urban move to break the building also into two on the ground floor. And that does allow for a cross-block connection into our so-called Art Walk, which is, it's a walk with a series of art, live-work spaces which join that space.
I see.
So we think that we can sort of program that to have a kind of special art fair or, you know, all those different programs link together. But just having that sort of mid-block connection was both convenient but also allowing for more ground floor glass and visibility and trans. Let's.
Understand. I get it. And I think only two more questions. One, I guess, just a little question on the relationship of the building to the Harrison Ave corner. It does seem much tighter. I mean, obviously, there's a large park on Washington Street. I mean, I assume that was part of the BPDA process. I just want to sort of make sure we're not sort of turning our back on Harrison. And then the other question, you can just maybe pop on real quick because I believe it's a very strong sustainability project as it relates to the roof scape and sort of potential. So maybe touch on those two pieces and then I will be done. Thank you.
I mean, I can say that the building was, we are moving, targeting lethal roof. We have solar panels, which you can't, or if you can't see in any of these images, but solar ray and electric heat. And I think that this is, maybe Cameron, if you want to elaborate, but this was sort of a requirement of the RFP as well as the developer's own kind of commitment to excellence in this area.
One thing I would like to add, as Stephen mentioned, there are going to be solar panels on the roof. We are also designing this building to minimize the carbon footprint. And most of the MOH, you know, buildings, they require R40 for the wall, R60 for the roof. So they're very well insulated, triple-lazed glasses, it's all electric. And also, we are going to have renters and buyers go to the community source for buying electricity, so minimize, like buying it from solar farms, so minimize any effect of the gas in, you know, this area.
And in one.
Most of our buildings is basically based on very high sustainability parameters.
And Eric, one other comment. There is a very pronounced scallop design on Melnea Cass. Those are clearly in deference to the existing trees on Melnea Cass. And that design not only allows for each tree to have its own space, but obviously we're maintaining everything that's there. In addition, we're planting 48 new trees. So we think that all of these improvements to the landscape, hardscape will certainly minimize the effects of the macro climate. So I think that there are also other, other kind of design considerations which I think demonstrate our commitment to sustainable, sustainable design.
I appreciate you touching that because I agree with you and thank you for that sensitivity to what we're looking for. So thank you. No more questions.
All right, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I also want to applaud sort of finally seeing these parcels that were left over from, you know, urban renewal days, getting developed in the city. So the curb cut on Harrison, how does that relate to the curb cut at that, at Morgan Memorial, Goodwill? Because that's, I know this is a tough site from a curb cut period, but how do those two driveways relate?
Do you go to the site plan?
Yeah, they're not, they're not aligned, that's for sure. Our curb cut is only simply to allow for access to our, our small parking lot as well as some servicing for the building. It's, if you go to the site plan, but basically, it's sort of wide enough for two cars to pass, but really then becomes one, one space which extends all the way along our Art Walk. It's really meant to be pedestrian only, but it's great for servicing.
Can we get the site plan?
When, with, you know, a pretty large number of residents in the building, they're going to be catching Ubers and Lifts and the like. Where are those vehicles going to stop?
I mean, on the early, you know, we asked them to give us the permission to have a curb cut, the same way we have at Parcel 9 on Melnea, but BTD were not for that, you know, thing. So they have to come, pull into that driveway and, you know, basically stop there. So back of the building, because BTD did not want us to have any drop-off on the Melnea, even I, per experience, is a very good practice, but.
So can they turn around? How do, I don't, you have to walk me through how that happens.
I mean, they go in and then they can turn around in the parking and then go back.
Okay. And, and you said all of the units are affordable? Is that what I heard?
That's correct. Everything is anywhere from 30% up to 120%. On the homeownership is more between 80 to 120% because of the financing mechanism that are available, but on the rental part is anywhere from 30% up to 120%.
And can you speak to sort of MWE involvement in the project?
Yeah, most of her experience, most of the times, you know, when we go on our development, over 40% of the project goes to MBEs or minorities. And the construction, you know, we reach up to probably 60, 70%, even here, we set 50%, you know, 51% to the minority, but historically, we have gone over that. Boston residents, we've been around 50%, and women, we've been around 10%, which on the previous project, we tried to reach the same numbers here. You know, our goal is 12%, 51, 51. But usually, Boston residents and women usually have some difficulties to reach to that 51%. But minorities, we have probably 60, 70, 80%, you know, minorities on the workforce.
Thanks, Cameron. So other than construction, what about with sort of your, your ground floor, your REIT commercial program or contracting with vendors?
The contracting, basically, we have a property management is from the UMI, from the community. They are in Roxbury. So those are, they're fair that they're going to manage the project. And then after the construction, all the, you know, cleaning, landscaping, everything else has got to be contracted to the people, actually businesses in the community and the minorities in the communities. I mean, we have a good track record. I mean, I think, I'm personally very proud of, you know, maintaining, you know, our commitment to this goal, you know, for past, you know, seven, eight years on many projects, not only in Roxbury. We demonstrated in Austin, we demonstrated in Jamaica Plain, and I think that's one of the main goals that we've been keeping constant, you know, performing.
Thank you.
Hey, Gene, I just want to add that I've represented Capford on most, if not all, of his developments, including this one here, and I would fit that category.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here to speak, provide public testimony? Oregon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The public and community have known about this project for quite some time and are in support. The only concern was, you know, to save the trees along the street, but they worked with them to, and the trees are remaining. So at this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Yes, hello, John Poyarbach, Senior Development Officer, Mayor's Office of Housing. Similar to the recently discussed Newby and Ascend, this is part of that comprehensive plan in, in Newby, and Mayor's Office of Housing fully supports it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Minor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Minor Perez, representing the Carpenters Union. I want to go and record a strong support of this project and kudos to Mr. Zahiri for not only he builds affordable housing, but he always does an outstanding job on his outreach to the community. Thank you.
I know it, just raise hands.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I would like a motion to approve with BPDA designer review.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
And I am also in total support, so the motion passes. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much.
Before we go to the last case on Neptune, we're going to go back to the Melville. Is Melville on 47 Melville Avenue?
Any raised, you know, some of your raised hands here?
All right, so I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to call it into the case, case DOA 135, 3570, 47 Melville Avenue. I'm going to make a motion to denial of all prejudice.
I'll second that, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Better Boraza?
Yes.
And I too am in support. That is, motion passes.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 12384024, Neptune Road. This is, this will change from a beauty salon to an adult recreational retail cannabis dispensary, violation of Article 53, Section 11. Cannabis established use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith of Sotera Law. Business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston Beck Bay. On the call with me, I have the owner and his mother, co-financial partners, and also the gentleman who'll be running security for the proposed dispensary.
All right, want to tell us a little bit of a closing, quickly?
Yes, Mr. Chair, very quickly, this is a pre-existing structure. It was formerly used as a beauty salon. The intent is just to convert the space, do interior reconfigurations, do some minor exterior building envelope upgrades, more aesthetic, some signage. There's pre-existing curb cut, or it's pre-existing space for about eight off-street parking spaces. We have run through the normal community outreach process and presented with the BCB for which we have approval with one condition, which has been updated, and we currently have a proposed host community agreement, which we are waiting for signature from the BCB pending their confirmation of new legislation.
So have you, have you already gotten approval from the cannabis board or not?
Yes, similarly to the people that presented before you on the 27th of July, they did provide approval with one condition.
And that condition was?
There was a proposed kind of takeout window, if you will. I don't want to call it a drive-through, but they had requested that to be removed. That has been done so, updated by the BCB.
Okay, so that was my question, because it says pickup window, and this is not a drive, this is not Dunkin' Donuts, right?
No, sir.
Okay, but there is still, but the basic business model is a pickup window for pre-orders? That is correct?
No, that was the request of BCB to remove that function, that pickup window, if you will, so that is proposed to be removed.
Okay, no, no, but I mean, are people going to preorder and then come and pick them up? Is that, is it not driving, but not a drive-through, but just walking in?
Yes. Anybody that can pre-order for efficiency's sake is welcomed.
Oh, okay, so, but it's not limited to pre-orders? That's what I meant.
Correct.
Okay, so this is just a conventional cannabis establishment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what are we in relation to the buffer zones?
We're in excess of both requirements. I would say that in some of the community outreach, there was a concern, there is a school in excess of the buffer zone, but there was concern about children as passersby on sidewalks for incoming outgoing cars. So the intent is to have a external traffic kind of overseer to ensure that, you know, when schools are releasing, which again are not inside of a buffer zone, that they are, you know, protected by people, patrons of the establishment.
What is the distance to the nearest school?
If I can confirm that while you ask further questions, or if, Brian, if you can have that answer.
That's fine. Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
The drawings are fine. I was checking the same. Is Excel Academy within 200 feet-ish, 250?
On Freeman Street?
I have the same question. I'm sorry, I'm a buffer of the, because I know Excel Academy is fairly close to that building.
It does look like it's within, I want to say half a mile.
Or maybe it's, oh, is it 500, oh, 580 feet, I guess, roughly. I'm doing a very quick Google map, so I'm not.
It's 580?
About, I'm just sort of roughly, so, okay.
So it's just outside of the limit?
You know, I think the layout is fine. It's a fairly small space. I do question some of the, I guess, the signage that's shown in the renderings. I guess that's sort of a little bit, I think, I'm not sure that's even allowed, but that's, I'm sure that'll be addressed at some other point by somebody else. But in terms of the, what's proposed, I don't see any other. Any questions from me in terms of the operation or design of the?
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, is there anyone here to testify either on behalf or in opposition to the proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. Our office held a community meeting on April 6th of 2022. We had less than 10 of others attend that meeting. A majority of those others expressed excitement towards the proposal. There were some concerns voiced regarding proximity to the two schools, as you heard from the applicant, as well as the amount of traffic. The site is next to one of the exits and entrances of Route 1, so it accumulates a lot of vehicular traffic over time. Butters also voiced concerns regarding the pickup window that has been addressed by the applicant. The applicant met with the Eagle Hills Civic Association January of 2022. They did not receive a vote, as the association states, they'd rather not vote on these kinds of proposals, but there were no objections raised in that meeting. So far, our office has not received any letters of support or letters of opposition. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there, is there anyone here, anyone else, any raised hands, anyone here to, looking to speak, looking to testify? All right, in that case, I will entertain a motion.
One, one, sorry, one follow-up question to the proponent. So there's a rear parking lot, is that for use of this building?
Yes, so that, well, you have a site plan, so basically the existing parking lot, if you're looking at the structures to our left, so it's basically existing curb cut with approximately eight parking spaces.
Okay, no further questions from me. Thanks, sorry.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Can we, can we add BTD review of the access and parking? Because it's a little, there's something funny going on, like I can't quite tell what's going on in the plan, but just to make sure that it's lined and striped and not a mess.
I mean, not a mess is a good theme.
Maybe that's too high of a proviso.
Okay, so is.
I'll second that.
Let's put it out, so we're looking at BPDA and BTD design review, is that okay?
Yes.
Ms. Donato, this is Tom. Could I clarify, is this for this applicant only as well?
For this applicant only.
For this applicant only.
I agree with that second, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Donato?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Varaza?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you all.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 125-8783, 99 Gary Street. This combined parcels direct a six-unit apartment building. Violation is Article 10, Section 1, the limitation of parking areas. Article 60, Section 40, parking maneuverability, and Article 60, Section 9, the building has excessive entry. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 15 Dobson Road. Mr. Chairman, we're here today to confirm the board's approval of this project. This project was approved by the board on August 9th, 2022, to erect the six-unit building. The violations before you today were read into the record and voted on and approved on that date, August 9th, 2022. However, there was an issue with regard to the notification and the notice, thus we are back today to confirm the approvals given by the board on that date.
Okay, so Mr. Small, was there anything, has anything changed in the proposal?
Nothing, nothing has changed. Tom, Tom, if you can clarify and just confirm that.
Yeah, good, I'm the board member, this is Tom Broome. Attorney Small is correct that this was, there was a notice issue with respect to these violations. They weren't changed on, they were used whatever, they weren't changing the notices to the public, so.
Okay.
The board generally.
Okay, so we should move through this with pretty, as long as nothing was changed. And did our approval have provisos associated with it?
Yes, it did.
Can, can you specify what those provisos were?
The project was approved with design review, no driveway, and to preserve the trees, and BPDA, some of them removed.
Okay, all right, so let's do this. I mean, let's go through the process, because it's a new application, but I think everybody should understand that this is basically just reaffirming a decision that was made prior. So Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are fine. One question on the proviso, is the headhouse, was that part of the proviso?
Yes, it was.
Okay, got it. Thank you, nope, the plans are fine, no other questions.
Yeah, thank you for specifying that, because I recall that. Okay, any other questions on the board? I'll ask for public testimony, but I'm not, but really brief. There's no need to go over this all over again. Okay, I appreciate everybody's response.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say, just from the notes from our liaison, the community process indicated there was some community support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Newman. All right, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Probably should wrote down, I guess we have to apply the same provisos.
Same provisos, yeah.
Yeah. I don't remember them exactly, so if we can just apply the same provisos, that would be fine, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so the motion made to approve with the application of the same provisos as before, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Donato?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Varaza?
Yes.
And I'm also in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you, members of the board. Have a good day.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 125-8638, 20 Hinckley Street. This is seeking to erect a single-family home. The violation is Article 55, Section 65-41, off-street parking insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot frontage. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient lot width. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback, and Article 65, Section 9, excessive F A R. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Discounter with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Presenting here today on behalf of Mike Token, the applicant, and we also have Eric Zachrisson from Context, that's the architect. This proposed project is at 20 Hinckley Street in Dorchester, and we're seeking to erect a one-family residential dwelling on an empty city parcel. Right now, on this, the last page, you were just looking at a rendering, or at least the elevations, colored elevations of the proposed structure. The lot size is 2,000 square feet. And just to go over what we have, on the first floor, we're proposing two bedrooms, a family room and a bath. On the second floor, living room, dining room, kitchen and a half bath. And then on the third floor, two bedrooms, two bath. And then we also have a roof deck at 440 square feet. It's exclusive to the top floor, obviously through a hatch, so there is no headhouse on the building. It was mentioned in the violations, we do, and I'll go over the violation, but we had a parking violation. When we originally had filed, we were proposing to have two parking spaces. And through our community process, the community asked us to remove those parking spaces. They did not want a curb cut to allow for one and then a tandem space behind it. And that is why we had that new violation. The other violations, just to mention, we have a lot area, there's a 3F 5,000 district, and we have, so it is a multifamily 3F district, but we have 2,000 square feet. Lot width is 50 required, we're at 25 for that in frontage. The building now is modal, that is another change. So we actually ended up getting a rear violation since we first filed. 20 would be required through the shallow lot exemption, we're at 10 foot 3 inches. And again, that was based on public comment to keep the building completely lined up with the streetscape on Hinckley Street. We have a side yard violation as well. At left side is 2 foot 6, right is 3. 10 is required, but that is pretty standard for this area. If you look up and down, there is, we are surrounded by three family buildings, like 3,200, 3,400 square foot lots. That is why we felt the one was reasonable for this area. I can pause and answer any questions at the board.
So Mr. Drago, this is, what was on this lot before, or what is on it now?
It's empty, Mr. Chair.
I mean, 2,000 square feet?
Mr. Ehrlich, I just wanted to remind you, we lost Mr. Varaza, she had to leave, so there's only five members.
Okay, and Mr. Drago, just to tell you, there's only five members, which is, you need a unit on this lot, so I assume you know that. Are you prepared to go forward?
Yes, I am, Mr. Ehrlich. So yeah, we are 2,000, most of the buildings around us are 3,200 and 3,600 with three-unit buildings on them.
Well, yeah, no, 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 I appreciate the fact that it's a single family, but 2,000 square feet, I think anything more than that would be kind of outrageous.
Oh, no, no, I understand, and I know BPDA have recommended approval as well.
Well, we'll get to that, we'll get to that in a moment. Okay, and, and there's a roof deck with, with a hatch proposed?
Correct.
Okay, and the roof deck is, is a setback toward the, toward the rear end of the building?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, I'm looking at it now, okay. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans? This seems like a tight, tight fit.
The, the plans are fine in terms of the proposed layout, it is what they're proposing. I don't disagree with you, I think it's actually quite tight on the site, and I know there's been some, you know, I know there's some community concerns about it as well, I've gone through all the letters, but no questions on the proposal, I think it's, it is what you see, and it is tight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the board?
Is that, is this a site with a large pine tree or existing there?
Yes, Ms. Donato, it is.
Yeah, so, you know, I imagine on this size lot, there's no other plantings possible?
So we actually, because we're setting to line up with the other buildings, we're hoping to keep the tree, trim it back, because we do have a front setback, as we pulled the building, and that was based on public feedback.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move to public testimony. Anyone here, well, actually, Mr. Hampton, did the BPDA have any view on this project?
Yes, actually, we did recommend approval with design review on this. We understand that it is tight, but we think a one-family would be appropriate on a smaller lot.
Okay, and in terms of contextual, you think it fits in?
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things where there are some triple deckers in this neighborhood, as well as regular colonials, so yes, we feel the context is fine.
Okay, all right, can I move to public testimony? Anyone want, want to speak either on behalf or in opposition to the project?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. George Witten with the Mayor's Office, the neighborhood services. Our office hosted two advisory meetings for this project in October of last year and January of this year, and the proposal received overwhelming and consistent opposition from community members, including the Dorchester North Neighborhood Association. And residents feel that the proposal is too large for the lot, and that the design is inconsistent with the neighborhood. They also oppose the roof deck. At this time, let's defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Secretary here, we do have opposition letters that the Mayor's Office just spoke of.
Are there other roof decks in the neighborhood?
Not immediate next to us, Mr. Ehrlich, but I think we would be happy to remove the roof deck if the board saw that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Joe McGaughan, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We're in opposition to the project today.
Any particular reasons?
The same reasons cited by the Mayor's office. It's just a lot of opposition, and there's just no community support for this project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Lodge Michael Party, Congress, Attorney, opposition.
May I, Ambassador, is there any other raised hands?
Ehrlich, this is Tom. We got a couple of raised hands on this one, I'll try to get them up here. Hi, Tom, can you, you got your hand raised?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so yes, my name is Thomas Murphy, I'm a director butter, I live like behind this piece of property. I'm obviously opposed to this, it's way, it's, there shouldn't be anything built in this lot, in my opinion. I lived there my whole life, I'm 52 years old and lived in this house, if not this house, the one right beside, so I've buttoned this property my whole life. And to me, this has always been a side yard. I know they keep calling it an empty lot, but it's more of a side yard. You really have to see it to, to even believe that they're trying to build something on this. So again, we're completely opposed to this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
There's one more, Mark K., I think. An email address for a name.
Hello, Mike, 19213 Street, and I thought it directly across the street from this property. And I would like to say that there's been nothing, but unanimous opposition, according to, and it says put in a size 12, size 6, sure, in a park unit. And actually, since I've lived here for 30 years, it is used as a side yard for.
Okay, all right, thank you. The point's been made, thank you very much. All right, can I have a motion, please?
May I respond, Mr. Ehrlich, if possible?
No, 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 I think, I think it's pretty straightforward. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice. I do think it's too big, I think the proponent has a right to build on a site. I think that just the proposed project is too big for where it is landing, side yard or not, so that is my motion.
Okay, it's unclear to me if they can do much less than a single family, so I'm wondering whether deny, straight denial might make more sense, but is there a second to Mr. Robinson's motion?
I'll second that motion, Secretary.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Donato?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Bede Varaza is gone, so I will vote in support of that motion, which means that it has been denied without prejudice.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure Falcon Street's going to move forward with a five-member board. Is Falcon Street on? Mr. Lenz?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Secretary, I apologize.
Are you still going to vote?
I'm thinking of the, looking at the table and seeing the cards that have been laid. We are going to take a full board for our Falcon, so requesting a deferral.
Okay, you have the right for administrative deferral, so I would, I maintain a motion for deferral.
I'll make a motion to defer. So a second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Donato?
Yes.
Ms. Dong?
Yes.
Ms. Bede, oh, she's gone, I am also in support, so the case has been deferred.
There will be a date of November 15th at 11:30.
Thank you very much, and let me just say that, Mr. Chairman and those members who may not be moving on, it has been a pleasure working with you these past years. You certainly expressed a certain level of professionalism, caring about the city of Boston, and I do appreciate that. Again, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenz.
Thank you, Mr. Lenz. Okay, Mr. Fortune, is that it?
That is it, sir.
Okay, can we go to a, then the meeting is adjourned, and can we go to a private session with the board members?
Recording stopped.